Call this meeting to order. This morning, or this evening, we'll actually skip the Pledge of Allegiance at the moment of silence and go straight to roll call.
Commissioner Ansorgi?
Here.
Commissioner Rushton?
Present.
Chairman Bonnick?
Here.
Commissioner Wessel?
Here.
Commissioner Sudis Little?
Here.
Commissioner Rattenbach?
Here.
Commissioner Lotner?
Present.
Present with two B of Polycom.
Thank you. So then, we are skipping, I believe, the communications, proclamations, and presentations?
Yeah, we'll reschedule the presentation, Highwater, from MSU for a future meeting.
All right. So that would bring us to minute approval. We have two items here. That's the Commissioner Lotner.
I would recommend, I would actually move that we approve the Executive Board Session of Tuesday, February 11th, 2020.
Support. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we move the March 10th Executive Board Session Meeting Minutes to the next meeting.
Okay. We'll just do that, then. And then, so then, that would bring us to...
Can you make a vote?
No.
Okay.
Not on that. If we're not going to approve it, we don't, we're just moving it forward. Then that, that would bring us, then, to public comment? Oh, no, I'm sorry, we have to approve our agenda. We have one late addition, which is the outline of the Special Attendants and Staffing Policy Considerations during outbreak and... Yes. What?
We have the Financial Late Addition too.
Well, yes. That, okay. It's just part of it, but...
Late late.
All right.
Late late.
So we have two additions. One on the Claims and Accounts, and one on the Special Asses... We'll put the, I would put the Special Attendants and Staffing Policy to 1A. And then, of course, the Claims and Accounts will be at Claims and Accounts.
Right.
We accept that as amended? You say you moved to...
I would move to accept the agenda as amended.
Support.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. I'm not able to hear Kai or Patricia.
I think they gotta speak individually. They do it both at the same time, neither one of them highlighted.
Do you have yours on mute, or...
I do not. Can you hear me?
Yes, now we do.
I will raise my hand when I vote as well.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes. I think if when you both speak at the same time, maybe it doesn't come through.
And raises.
Yeah. All right. So then that brings us to public comment. Is there any public comment tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on. And I've set up a agenda, consent agenda, and it's going to include, well, I'll actually just say the ones that will not be included. As number one would be the 1A, the Late Edition. The second one would be number one itself, is the Campus Tower Discussion. Then it would be number four, C, is the Senior Services Milage. Then number six, the Drain Commission Recommendation. Then, then we have seven, it would be 7A would also be on the regular agenda. Then 9B would be on the regular agenda, and 12. So all others would be on the consent.
I'm not sure that you mentioned item number three.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Solid Waste Council as well. So there should be 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 items that'll be on, taken off, and not on the consent agenda. So, and we'll do that, we'll do the consent at, when we get to number two. So, so as the action item, we'll take 1A at this time.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry?
Peter?
Yes.
I just wanted to move that we, the Board of, excuse me, the Board of Commissioners approved Special, I've got to read this here. Special Attendants and Staffing Policy Considerations During Outbreak of Services. Hope that came out right.
Severe.
Okay. I would second that.
Okay.
Can I give an update?
Sure.
Well, obviously, it's been a challenging time for everyone. These are unique circumstances for all of us. Give me, I'll give a brief overview, because you know what's going on locally, statewide, and nationwide. Commissioner Bonnick and I have been in rigor dialogue for almost the past week, I think, almost on a daily basis, sometimes two, three times a day. It has kept evolving. We've had joint discussions with Grand Jarvis County. Started off first talking about the joint meeting today that was scheduled for the Airport Commission. I've been in contact with the Michigan Association of County, our legal counsel, our peer administrators, got calls from Senator Van Der Rohe's office, and Representative Jack O'Malley's office, and it's changed almost every single day. Commissioner Bonnick can tell you that we've been talking dialogue. Until this morning, we were trying to avoid making any long-term decision in terms of closing these facilities to the public. However, last night, I talked to our Health Department official, and again this morning at 7:00. And as you know, there has been a confirmed case of the coronavirus, and it is local. Fortunately, the person seems to be doing well. That's, that's a positive thing. But based on the advice of the Health Department, based on input from the President and the Governor, and as of today, I think, just this morning alone, I'm aware of 12 counties that have taken the same action we are, or will be taking it. And from what the Michigan Association of Counties is telling us, by the end of the week, probably virtually every county at the state will have some type of policy similar to what we are proposing. One thing I want to make clear, we are not closing down any services. Every office will be available. As you walk in the building, you see, the doors will be open, the access to the bathrooms will be available, the courts will continue. They have their own guidelines that they are operating on. However, the doors coming into the building will be closed. We do have a phone set up here that people can call into the offices. We have a Dropbox there if people want to leave payments, any documents, they can do that. UPS, FedEx will be delivering there. Every office will be open every day. We designate employees in three categories: critical, essential, non-essential. Critical, obviously, everyone next door at law enforcement, and 911 is critical. And the sheriff and Matt Ansorgi have been working on plans for the last couple of weeks. I know yesterday, you had a conference call, nationwide conference call for two hours almost, to deal with that situation there, because there's some guidelines there. Here, we have been rigor contact. Every phone call will be answered, every email will be responded to, every office will have at least one person staff. So we are designating some employees as being critical, which means they physically have to be here, work their normal shifts. Other people that are essential will have the option, department by department, of being either here and/or working remotely at times, depending on the circumstances. Anyone who needs to work remotely, we do have the ability to give them access. For the few people, and it is few, that we deem to be non-essential, some of those are for medical reasons, some are related to their duties, responsibility, that's a small group, and we are recommending that in the policy, we give 10 days of them. Of 10 days that they will not have to use their sick days or vacation days, because we are mandating that they not come to work. The policy was drafted by legal counsel. The days, every county is doing differently. Some are giving unlimited leave, some are doing none, and everything in between. We thought 10 days would be fair. There are actually, between now and Friday, August 3rd, I'm sorry, April 3rd, there are 12 workdays. Tomorrow, even though we're closed, is everyone will still be here. But starting Thursday are 12 workdays. So those that are deemed non-essential, some of them will have 10 days, some of them will have five days, some people are splitting up the offices to rotate, some with health issues have been given the full time off. We do have the right to cancel any vacation or personal day request, however, we may not. So if someone in one office has a vacation and wants to take it, if that department has said yes, they certainly will often continue, however, that will still count against the personal day and vacation days. So those that we are mandating that they not come to work for numerous reasons, those people will be eligible for up to the 10 days. This is through Friday, April 3rd, which relatively is, means, we hope to open on Monday, April 6th, whether that will happen or not, it's difficult to say. That's the day we took, because that's the day the school systems are using. That's what most local governments at this time are using as a deadline date of April 6th. That could change. It's very difficult to say what will happen beyond that day. Some more legal updates. Several counties have done research, and our legal counsels, actually, the Board Chairman has the authority to declare a state of emergency if he or she chooses. Within so many days, the Board would have to accept that recommendation.
Seven days.
I believe it's seven days. So some counties are not doing, some counties have actually canceled their board meetings for this week, and the chairman has dictated that. There's some movement at the state level. I think you've seen the MAC updates about changing Open Meetings Act, so would allow commissioners and units of government in the state to have meetings by Polycom, or audio, or other technology, and not violate the Open Meetings Act. So it's a fluid decision. There may be some mandates at the state level, or the federal level, that may supersede this, that could come out this week, or next week, or next month. So it's evolving day to day. I appreciate the feedback that most of you have taken the time to contact me. I think we talked to everyone, actually, on the board, and I know we've received quite a few emails and different thoughts and opinions, but based on what has happened in the last 24 hours, I feel comfortable that we're making the right decision, and we're still going to provide services to the people in the whole county. And the reality is, the last few days, we've had very few people walk in the building here anyway. But because of what service we have, unfortunately, the way the building is structured, it does make it possible to have the courts proceed, because they have their own state guidelines. It does make it possible for us to separate the employees and still conduct business. So that's just a summary overview.
Commissioner Arxton?
Yes. There are three things with this proposal that I would like to have some discussion about. One is the language in here in regards to the appointing of a designated person in the event that the three chosen people cannot perform. The second item is the length of time, 60 days. I would like to see that shortened. I think in a month's time, by the time our next Executive Board regular meeting would take place, we should have a little better understanding or handle on certain issues. And the third thing that concerns me is currently, there is no Board of Commissioners' operational plan for us to be able to do the work for the county. And I don't know if the administrator would like to speak to that.
Yeah. You have iPads. In theory, we all could do Polycom here. Actually, you can load the Zoom app on your iPad, and we can help you with that. We've helped Commissioner Wessel and Commissioner Sudis Little. So in theory, all seven of you, if the state allows it, we could have a meeting, Polycom, where you can communicate back and forth. We also have the ability by telephone, but obviously, the Polycom system is better. But the iPads do give you the ability to do the Zoom technology.
And would it be required for us to present a motion to this board today in order to allow us to move to that type of meetings?
I think that is a state decision because of Open Meetings Act. By law, as you know, you have to have four people physically present here. So right now, that's not possible.
Okay.
However, that may change by Friday, from what I've been told.
Right.
So if there's a state mandate, or the ability to do that, then you can, the chair, I believe, I believe can say the next meeting will be by...
Polycom.
By Polycom.
Well, I would encourage our administrator to set that in motion, so that we, as the Board of Commissioners, have an opportunity to do the business of the county as we go along. We really don't know how long we're going to be, you know, under these newly presented mandates or decisions. And I think it's unfair that three people in this county make all the decisions. I understand initially that operationally, we do need to have some action today in order to take care of the employees, the operational, day-to-day operations of the county. So I would like to see that put in place. And as far as the timeline, I think that we, as a county board, should be prepared by our next executive meeting to be able to function as a board with the Polycom in place. So at this time, I would like to amend this motion and to indicate that this authority will only be valid for the next, I'm not sure how many days it is, but until April, I believe it's the 14th, when our next executive meeting is.
30 days, then?
Um...
I think it's about 25.
30.
I'm just saying.
Yeah.
How many days do we have for the next meeting? If we can maintain our regularly scheduled meetings, then the community will know that we're still on the same agenda.
Is it April 14?
28, the 28 days.
Well, how long did you say through April 14?
April 14th. So I would like to amend this to limit that authorization until April 14th.
I think that would come with this, because this does not have a day in it. We're going to make a second motion, I think, on this, aren't we?
This contract has, this authorization is valid for only 60 days. And I believe the motion was to approve this.
Yeah. Let me explain, I think, what, I think we're all kind of on the same page.
Yeah.
What we need to do, I think, Commissioner Ansorgi, we need to have a policy, you need to approve a policy.
Okay.
So I would say that, based on your response, change this to 30 days next.
Okay.
And then, you can approve implementing this through April or whatever.
April 14th. Okay.
The Polycom is not an issue. We have the technology in place.
Correct.
We'll do that. We will get you, we will send you the name of, it's called the Zoom app. I'm guessing most of you do not remember your password.
I know mine.
If you do, just go to the App Store, download the Zoom app yourself. If you need help with the password, let us know, we'll get you to that. And maybe we'll have a trial run. We did a trial run this morning.
Perfect.
And we can pick a day, you can stay at home, we can do a trial run.
Perfect.
But this depends on what happens at the state level in terms of Open Meetings Act.
And in regard to the designee, my thoughts were, if the administrator were not able to perform his function, that we would appoint another commissioner as the designated person. And as far as the clerk, I would recommend that we appoint somebody from the clerk's office. Those are my only changes in regards to this.
Michelle?
Just so I get it clear, this isn't so much in the form of amending the motion, it's just amending the document in front of us at this point, right? To make those, the policy, to make those changes to the policy.
Amending the policy.
Yeah, okay.
I just want to get it correct.
Are there any other statements or questions about this? Commissioner Lotner?
Yes. I have, I have some of the very same points Commissioner Rushton spoke to, that I'd like to speak to. I have no problem with us putting in place a policy for, if we ever should need this in the future, not knowing what might come down the road in form of a, a huge plague. We're meeting here tonight, we can make decisions tonight. Hopefully, as this, this virus has done in other countries, has peaked and gone away, and, and God willing, this country is going to peak and be gone in just a short while. So I had some of the same concerns, and, but I took it one step further. I, I really think, in this day and age of technology, and especially if a Polycom is available, that, that no decision should be made, other than what our statutory law in place today, as far as an emergency goes, as far as chairman goes, and financially, even something for the administrator, anything else can be made as a full board. So I have a real problem with, as Deborah said, the select few. I, my next issue I have is us picking apart our employees and designating them critical, non-essential, and, let's find that again, too much highlighted in here. But basically, non-essential in non-critical positions, I guess I have a problem with. So we're, to back up a step, so the courthouse is going to be open, so if someone wants to come in, we're going to have commission on aging available, because...
They will not be able to go into the offices.
Well, we're available for their services, correct?
We will. Limited services. Depends on what the specific issues are. As you know, the federal level is saying over the 10 people, the state is saying over 25 people at a time, and...
We will still be taking care of our seniors through this virus, correct?
Do the best that we can.
I don't know why we would limit any services, especially since this virus hits, our seniors the worst.
Well, we're not limiting services, but in terms of gathering...
Okay, but I just understood that we were going to have limited services. So, so this disturbs me greatly, because they don't have to come to this building for our seniors to be taken care of.
The challenge ahead, even the younger people can be spreading it and go into seniors. We are told the quarantine, that's come from the Health Department, that's come from the federal, and that's come from the state level.
There are lots of ways that our seniors can be taken care of without, without having exact and total interaction with them. I'm talking, I'm talking about taking care of them as far as their needs go. As far as anything else beyond that, to physically, if they need support, then we've got, they will be seen by emergency personnel if the need arises. So they're still going to possibly have some interreaction. So, so if somebody needs to come to register needs, will they be allowed to come into the building?
They can do it without being in the building.
Okay. So on down the line, if they want to come in and do something in the treasurer's office, are they going to be able to...
We have a Dropbox, yes. Outside here. People not, on their unique, own under unique circumstances, will they be allowed to enter the building beyond the doors?
And this level? That they'll be able to go up to courts?
The courts have their own guidelines and...
That they will be able to go up to courts?
That's up to the courts, and they have a whole separate policy.
Parking tickets, speeding tickets? No.
They can't pay any tickets in person. They have notes out here, they can do envelopes and iPhone only.
All right. So I guess that's, that's my main concern, is that if we've got employees that we can deem non-critical and non-essential...
For a two-week period.
Okay. I, I'm just going to tell you, I have a real problem with that, because I don't think we should be labeling any of our employees non-essential employees. I also had a problem with the 60 days. I think that that also is unnecessary. And as far as this goes, I would have handled it differently. I think that we, we could have taken a different tact with our citizens and, and asked them not to come to the courthouse unless it was essential, and let them choose. I don't really believe that the interaction would have been that different. So we're, we're asking everyone across the street to have full contact with our citizens because they're critical. They, I really don't see any, anything changing.
It's restricted next door to the public also, the public's not allowed...
I'm talking about our deputies on the road.
Well, of course, yeah, they're first responders.
Okay. Well, they're first responders. So there's no difference. I guess my point is, there's no difference with the first responder carrying a virus as, as our employees carrying a virus, or our first responders being exposed to a virus as opposed to our employees. We don't want to see any of that, but I, I guess I'm having a real problem with us breaking it down in classes of our employees.
Well, part is also what you say to our employees, we're trying to limit the contact with the public, both people coming in and also for our employees.
I understand perfectly what you're, what you're doing, but I have a real problem labeling them.
Anything else? Commissioner Ansorgi?
My perspective on this is, we're attempting to follow the CDC guidelines as, as best we can at this point in time. They're going to change, we know that, and we may have to have that flexibility with these emergency things. And the labeling of these classifications is only for the purposes of this policy. It does not mean that these employees are non-essential. It's they're non-essential for the purposes of this policy.
All right, good. Any other comments? Seeing none, all, we're going to, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion passes six to one.
Now that we have a policy in place, we have to decide if we want to make that policy effective for this particular situation, and therefore, I move that the Lenoir County Board of Commissioners determine that the COVID-19 virus is a severe communicable disease, and that the Special Attendants and Staffing Policy is in effect from March 18th, 2020 through April 14th of 2020.
Support.
Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
So motion passes six to one. All right, so we, so then that'll, we'll move on, then, to our, to our agenda, and, yes.
I would like, I had mentioned about the designee being a county commissioner under this policy, so because we didn't...
Go ahead and make that motion.
Okay. I would move that the, well, the language in the policy would have to change.
Yeah.
Okay. I would make the motion that the designated alternative for the position of the administrator be granted to a commissioner upon a board vote. I don't know what else to say.
Or maybe selected by the, because it's, depending on what happened, selected by the chairman would endorse by them.
Okay, selected by the chairman, endorsed by the Board of Commissioners.
And there may be some unique circumstances where we can't wait till the next meeting.
Right, or it'd be the vice chair.
For you, it would be the vice chair.
Yes.
Right.
For the administrator, they have to pick...
Okay, anyway, there you go.
But I would say maybe just to have flexibility, have the chairman designate someone that can be endorsed by the commissioners.
I'll, I'll accept that language as part of the motion.
For any of the three people.
Right.
So, so that would be your motion, right?
Right, for any of the three.
I would support...
I would support that motion.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. So then that would bring us then to the Campus Tower discussion?
Yeah, Matt Ansorg is here, and you have a proposal that I emailed to you on Friday that's from our consultant, and just a brief overview in terms of what the process be and the cost, and Matt, do you want to add anything to this?
Not a whole lot to add to that.
Yeah. At this time, if you're comfortable, we simply would like for you to endorse us to proceed with the process, and maybe next month come back with Matt's here with more specific details, with a more detailed report.
Commissioner.
You know, I'm good with that, but one of, one of the things we have to decide is, are we going to follow Suttonfay zoning? Or have their input into this?
If you decide to proceed, then you have discussion, but until you make a decision, I guess the first step would be see if you want to proceed with this process. So, we had a verbal discussion last month, you asked for a brief overview, last week, I think, it was last week, last week, so you have this, if you like, to authorize Matt and I, we can come back next month, hopefully next month, with more detailed information, our consultant can be here, then if you seek to proceed with that, at some point you have to make that decision, yes.
I just don't want to let that be forgotten in the press.
It won't be forgotten.
Perhaps so much as, sleepless, oh, how many commissioners were they? Most of the commissioners did when they moved to this site.
So Matt, I don't know if you have anything else to add, I know you, you're on time crunch here, so, if you have questions, Matt will be glad to answer that, if not, if you feel comfortable, tell us to proceed, and we'll come back next month. I don't think we have a motion, if you feel comfortable, we'll proceed, give more details to you next month.
I can make the motion if you'd like.
It's, it's up to you.
I would move to allow the administrator and the Director of 911 Services, Mr. Ansorgi, to pursue the proposed tower at the governmental complex, bring it back to the board so that we can have further discussion.
Support.
I support Dan.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much. All right, so then that would bring us to the, what I'll call a consent agenda. Commissioner answering?
I would move to accept the consent agenda as proposed.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. So then, then we would move to Senior Services, C, oh, I'm sorry, Solid Waste Council, in our local agreement, I'm sorry. Please come forward. So, did you, do you want to say anything about it first, or it's, it's pretty much stayed at the way it was last week, right?
Yes, what we're looking for with the Solid Waste Council is approval so that we can start taking this out to the local communities, get their feedback, and find out if there's something that they would want to change and have inserted into this document. I know there's been a lot of suggestions and wording and so forth, and I think it would be good if we heard from the communities to find out what they might like to propose to us if they want something changed in here. So, that's where we're at right now.
Mr. Ruston.
I had a discussion with the supervisor down in Elmwood Township, and he did confirm that when they did pursue curbside recycling and regular garbage pickup, they had a combined offer for both, and when they, upon further investigation for them, they in fact said that they were threatened with a lawsuit at that time. And in the conversation with the supervisor, he had indicated that his concern with this particular contract was the language in there in regards to being able to negotiate if both mutually agreed, and he said to me, he said, "That brings no value to the township." So, we did have a conversation in regards to bringing that to his board, and allowing them to weigh in on this particular issue. I'm not sure at this point that the board will support this agreement as it's written, and we may, we may want to reconsider that specific language in there, because it does prevent certain counties from pursuing the, the curbside recycling, because if the county doesn't agree to that at a reduced cost, like I believe Commissioner Ansorgi was referring to, by breaking out other additional services, I, I think we tie the hands of those townships to move towards increased recycling in that fashion. I would really hate to see the county lose the site in Elmwood Township. It's a, a site that is readily used by a lot of Leland County citizens, as well as Grand Traverse County citizens, and I think we should be a little bit more flexible with our townships, especially if they have sites on their properties. So, that's my two cents for whatever it's worth.
Commissioner answering?
I'm not going to repeat the whole conversation I had before, but if you are intent on really taking this 10-year proposal out to the different townships en masse, without even talking to them first, first, be aware of the message that you're sending, and then secondly, be, be prepared to break out those costs for, you know, how much is recycling, how much is household hazardous waste pickup, how much of is scrap tire pickup? So that you're prepared to answer those questions when you do go out to the townships, and also then also be prepared to talk about why you're doing it for 10 years, and not breaking that out in the interlocal agreement, so that basically you're tying those townships' hands for 10 years, that you are not going to let them go to curbside recycling.
The, the 10 years that's mentioned in the agreement is by statute, so that's, that's what's in the statute, we can't change that. The first time with the vote was five years, and every time after that is a 10-year time period. I will definitely take this information, and I think what we'd like to do is probably go to Elmwood Township first, and to talk with them, and, you know, see what they say about before we start going to other communities.
You know, I, I just hope that we can come to some sort of a resolution on this issue, and maybe we have to think outside the box going forward. We all support a county program, I'm sure Elmwood supports a county program, as a lot of the other townships support a county program, but I think we need to, as I said, think outside the box, and, you know, if five years down the road Elmwood sees the opportunity, or Bingham sees the opportunity to maintain a site, or remove a site, whatever's going to happen, I think that there should be some play in the, in the contract that allows that.
Any, Commissioner Lawson?
Trudy, was, was it under separate cover, when we looked at this last week, did we have another version that had some highlighted language in there about, about townships not, with us not interfering with township's right to recycle?
It's on the, it's on the second page of the agreement, it was highlighted in red from the attorney.
That's what I'm, was it highlighted in red on our, on our iPads, because these aren't highlighted?
Should have been, it's the, it's the section that says nothing stated in this agreement, et cetera.
Okay, so, that, what we're hearing is that is not acceptable language for Elmwood?
I don't know that for sure from the township.
But per our commissioners, that's what you're, you're hearing. So, my second question is, what, what is the drop dead date you need for this to be approved by us?
July 30th, so what this does is approval, this allows us to go out to the communities and seek approval from them so that we can get this on the ballot issue in, at November.
July, July 3rd?
Yes, we want to have these back from all the townships and villages by July 30th, so we have some time to get before them, get before their meetings, and then that still gives us time to get that ballot issue on the November ballot.
So would it come to us then in August, after you get approval from all them, or do you need it from us first and then move forward?
What you did in the past is you approved this document.
Okay.
And when the communities approved it, we had them signed by both parties. If there's going to be changes, then obviously I need to bring it back to you and see what you say.
Okay.
Just a note I might add is I do believe the Elmwood Township Board met last night-
No, they did not.
Oh, they did not?
Cancelled.
It was cancelled, okay, well, they were going to raise that issue, so-
So, you're looking for approval tonight to, you're looking for authorization to move forward, take this out to-
Actually looking for approval of this document, of this interlocal agreement.
So I would make that motion.
Second.
If we approve this document today, are you telling us here today that if those townships come back and want a change in this contract, then they would have an opportunity to do that?
If, if they're going to want extra wording in there, or they don't agree with something, then I'm going to come back and see what we need to do about it, I'll contact our attorney as well to see, you know, what needs to be done, but I'm not going to say-
But there's no guarantee.
There's no guarantee of what?
There's no guarantee, there's no, if, if you go to the townships and they object to the language that is here today, then, and if you and the township cannot come to some sort of an agreement, then the only option you're leaving available to that township is for them to decline to put this on their ballot, is that-
If I, if I, if we, myself and Solid Waste Council go out to the townships, and let's say that we have three of them that say this works for us, and they sign it, and the county board has approved it, and they sign it, and we have two that say, "We need something else in this document, here's the three steps we need, I'm bringing it back to you," because that's not the document that you approved, so I would bring it back to you to make sure that you agree with that as well.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
So in simple terms, you're basically authorized, and Trudy, start the process, to start meetings with the townships?
Yep.
And as Trudy pointed out, if seven of them are fine with it, you have authorized it, she'll get the signature, it's a done deal for those seven.
Okay.
If two want to come back with different revisions, obviously that's not what you approved, so she cannot go forward without your consent.
Commissioner answering?
My problem here is, we're sending a message, if we approve this, that you're, we already know there's a problem in Elmwood Township, but by us approving that this is what we want, that's sending a, a bad message, in my opinion. And it will, you know, what do you, what would you expect Elmwood Township's response to that would be? I would rather say, you know there's an issue, go out and talk to them, and see before you say, "Well, I already got this approved by the county board."
Commissioner Lawson.
Did you say you will start with Elmwood?
Yes, I think that's a good place to start.
All right, all those in, yes.
Do you have an opportunity to speak to Elmwood and let them know what this looks like, to get their input, before we actually vote on this today?
I didn't bring the statute with me, but if I remember correctly, from the steps that we followed last time, and the statute is that you are to, you are to agree to these documents before we go out and actually take those steps.
Okay.
That's why I'm repeating what we did 10 years ago, bringing it back to you.
Commissioner answering?
Would you send that information to us electronically, please?
Send it to, oh-
Us.
You mean the agreement?
No.
Oh, what, we send to the townships?
No, what's, what's the statute say?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
All right, any other questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to three.
Oh.
Okay.
Who were the three, I had them?
Ansorgi, Ruston, and Bonnick?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so, then that, then that brings us then to the Senior Services Millet Renewal, and we have a resolution here for that? So, Commissioner Ruston?
I have a couple of questions for you, April. Last week, I had requested information on your budget, which I believe we all received, and I believe one of the other questions last week was a question on the amount of anticipated revenue from property taxes, if I'm not mistaken?
And that's in the resolution today.
Okay.
That is a-
Yes, I got one.
Yeah, flip on the back, the very first line.
Okay, so that number is a lot more realistic.
Yeah.
So in looking over the revenue and expense report, it appears to me that at the end of December 2019, I read here where you have a current fund balance of $509,841.41. Is that a true statement?
We're going to go get Jen another report, April.
Okay, I don't, yeah.
Because I know not all the expenses are-
Jen went to get your question.
Yeah, Jen, because not all the expenses from 2019 are still-
Jen's going to go get that?
Yep, she just went to get it.
Did you have any other questions?
I noticed that in 2018, that you had 19% of your, um-
Budget?
19% of your revenue that was not spent, and if this current fund balance is correct, that is 23, almost 23% of your budget that you're not spending.
I also want to bring to attention that we did lose a part-time employee halfway through the year, and then with the increase in the millet, we were increasing programs, and many of those programs were not up and running until May or June, so the expense was not there.
Of 2019?
Yes. So that attributes to some of that.
I'm a little concerned with approving this millet for four years. I would consider approving this millet for two years, and take a look at this budget again in two years, because as we all know, our property values are increasing, and if we move forward today, you're starting out with a half a million dollars, if the current fund balance is correct, and then to add to that another 800-plus thousand dollars gives you a, what, a $1.3 million budget for our senior services, which I think is a little on the high side. So for me, I would like to see this millet reduced to two years. If we decide that that is a correct fund balance going forward, I would like to see the levy reduced. I would like to see the levy reduced. And I guess I can wait to hear the response.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Commissioner Westle.
Could, could, could you report the recommendation of the advisory committee that we have three commissioners on, or two commissioners on? What was the recommendation?
There, there were, there are three of us on that in, yeah. Commissioner Rittenbach is the chair of that committee.
There are three of us, and we all voted to support the resolution as presented. And I would make that motion that we approve the resolution as presented today.
Okay, is Commissioner Westle, do you, are you, was your question answered then?
Yes, it was.
Oh, okay.
And.
Did you still have the floor? Did you still have the floor?
Well, she was waiting for the return on that.
I said, I guess we'll wait till we hear.
Yes, so are you ready to continue on? She's back now.
Could you please answer that question as far as the fund balance?
Okay, so one of the situations when you run into a fund like this is that it is a millage. So they collect early. So even though her fund balance may say what it is at the end of the year, it has collected those that paid their taxes on their tax bill before January 1st. She is collecting basically ahead of her fiscal year.
Okay, but we don't, what was her fund balance before the?
Collection of taxes.
The collection.
So, um, here on your report that you have, that's not final, it tells you in December 31st, which is the second line down called current taxes, that 126 of that was brought in.
Hold on.
It's okay. It's the first page, it's the second line, current taxes.
Okay.
Okay. And then also, the treasurer has to adjust her revenues. And he has not yet done this before this was, um, produced. We're during, we're doing audit this week. And so I won't know her final fund balance until after audit, because they do adjust her revenues.
So if we take out the 2020 taxes, right?
That would depend on, I'd have to look back to see, in 2018, it looks like it was 115,000 in that, in that December. So you're looking at a $5,000 difference, or $10,000 difference. So I would agree. You could back that out. See, each year she collects, each year it rules.
Okay, so what you're telling us is we need to back up the 126,000 and $10,000 in addition to that?
In essence, and that's, that's when you're looking at your fiscal year, a firm number that I believe you could do, you could use is the 126.
So the fund balance is right around $350,000 then?
I would agree.
Okay. And my next question is in regards to the commissioners who sit on the senior services board. Did they verify your fund balance before they supported this millage?
I provided the mil, the budget to them. We reviewed it.
Okay.
And they were fine with that.
So at this time, um, I would recommend that we support the resolution for the millage election for the senior citizens services millage in the amount indicated, .0320, for a two-year period. So we can examine, um, the books at the end. I think the goal for us here is not to create that fund balance that grows and gets out of hand. So I would like to see us look at this again in two years.
So I, I'll support the motion that stopped probably after two years.
Yeah, it was a motion, then it caught.
Okay, so, so the motion.
Commissioner Rittenbach had her hand up first.
I was answering a question from Commissioner Westle. When I was in the process of making a motion to approve the, the resolution as it was presented, I will not be supporting the resolution that's been put on, put forward in, in the second because of the overwhelming amount of people that supported the millage the last time that it was voted on. An overwhelming amount of people. We've added services. We are continuing to add services. People are happy with what we've been doing. And as I said, our board did, you know, our senior services committee did, uh, talk about the length of the, um, millage, and we feel that that's appropriate at this time.
Commissioner Anderson.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Anderson, he has his hand up.
I would like to remind my fellow commissioners that you set a millage, but you don't have to collect the entire amount. Every year, we have the opportunity to adjust that and have done so in the past. And that's how you can, or any future board, can look at, at this and say, we don't, we build up a surplus, we don't need to collect the whole amount, and you reduce the amount that you actually collect. We have done it in the past. I'm assuming that's still available to be done?
Yes.
Yes.
So I do not have that concern about two years versus four years because every year you have the opportunity to adjust that down. Not up, but down. So that's my two cents.
Commissioner Long.
Nice, thank you. By going for four years, that actually brings in less money for our seniors than going two years. If we go for two years and ask for the restoration with a headly rollback, isn't that correct? I don't know what the difference would be, but there's actually, because it isn't restored in the meantime. I don't know, it's such a.
You're talking about during the four years, it's such to the headly rollback each of the four years. On a two-year millage, you've got it at the rate you want. It's rolled back one year, then you come back again in two years, hit it at the higher amount.
Yes.
And it rolls back to whatever.
But you're collecting the same amount.
So that, that's the reason I supported the motion for two, for two years. So that we can come back in two years and see where we are. Should it be here? Should it be, where should it be? Take another look at it in two years. I am going to support the motion for the millage, but I'm just going to come back to this policy that we just passed tonight and let you know, April, as head of senior services, how greatly alarmed I am that we could be putting, if we base some of your employees, as I understand tonight, as non-essential, non-critical employees, that we're leaving our seniors out there without support, without care. I would rather have, and we're going to be paying employees to sit at home for 10 days and not do anything. I would rather they be in this courthouse. That is not why, that is why I did not support this motion.
I don't know the personnel, but none of her employees are not essential. They all will be working.
Okay, well, that was my question. So you will be taking care of our, we're seeing, that is not the answer I got early in the meeting. So, um, so you will be going out to our seniors if they need whatever, they're, rather than have them get out of their homes, if they need you to go pick up their medications, if you're allowed to.
We are working with a number of service providers and volunteers to ensure that everybody has their needs met. We're, we on the phones if somebody has a need, or if you see a neighbor or a family member that has a need, that we're going to be working with a whole community and making sure that needs are met.
So none of your employees will be home collecting their salary while, for not working, correct?
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you. Or shouldn't be salary, I guess, hourly wage too, is that how that's going to work? Their hourly wages, they'll get their hourly wage.
They will contend to be compensated the same way that they are now.
All right.
Commissioner Westle, you have the floor.
Commissioner Anderson, he said it better than I can. But I, I support four years. I don't support two years. I think we need the stability of four years. We can review the amount each year. So I'm going to go down this motion and hopefully have a motion for four years.
Commissioner Sudas Little. We, we can't hear you. Maybe it's on mute?
Sorry, I muted.
Okay.
The, when we originally approved this last time for two years, the idea was to shake up the new programmatic features, put things in, bring it up to speed, and that's happening. And those of us who serve on senior services have been very convinced that it's worth what we've invested in. So I agree going to four years makes a lot of sense. And as Commissioner, and sorry, if we find it's more than we think, we can always reduce the millage amount if needed. But I think it's wise to let them know from a planning standpoint, long-term, that they have that period of time. For stability, as Commissioner Westle said, and also, you know, to allow for planning without the fear that you're, you're not going to have that in the years. It's always, that's a rule we have. But I'm going to support it. I'm not going to support it. I'm going to support four years if somebody makes that motion.
Okay. Well, and that, that, I, you know, I guess the thing that concerns me about the thing, when we looked at the, the budget, we were looking at July. And we're looking at how much money was in the budget at that time, and we weren't sure at the end of the year what it was going to be. You know, so if, if we were going to do anything to shorten it, I, you know, I'm going to support the four years as well myself. If we're going to do anything, I would say we would do, reduce the amount of millage if they have $350,000. Not reduce the number of years. But we might do that at, for this one year to balance out the budget. But we're still, I think, in the process of figuring out what the programs are, how many employees we're going to have. And so we're, it's still in flux, as Commissioner Sudas Little said. So I, I think that we're still looking at that. So whether we go two years or four years, I think, you know, we, we should be looking at the amount of the millage, not the, the length of it, you know. Commissioner Rushden.
I would just like to point out that, uh, last year, we had an opportunity to look over, you know, whether we're going to reduce this millage, keep the millage the same. We didn't look at this last year. The second point I would like to make is I kept, in my motion, I kept the millage the same because of what you said today, April, that the program wasn't implemented until the center of the year. So we don't know how much more these programs are going to grow. And the reason for a two-year, uh, millage was, at the end of the next two years, we would have a very good idea of the population that is using the services. And if we need to adjust that millage up, we would have the opportunity to do it at this time. But my fellow board of commissioners evidently feel that, you know, this millage rate will sustain our population, uh, for the next four years. So if that's the way they want to vote, then have at it.
Mr. Long.
It's a deadline in May to get it on the August ballot, or is it in April?
I believe it's May. I think it's May, isn't it, Michelle? I need to break my calendar. It's called in May. Could be April. I can go look if you'd like. That's my guess.
Do you want to look at that?
Well, my, my only, my only purpose for that is that we would have, you would have your auditing numbers by then, or be pretty close to, you'll be done with?
No, the auditors aren't on site. We're actually doing it virtual, because they're not allowed to leave their, their homes.
But you have the number, all your 19 expenditures should be in by?
Her 19 expenditures are there. Her, the issue, the, what is not there is what's John's going to adjust down or up for her revenues.
And when will he have that?
Which affects her fund balance. That will be, right now, the auditors aren't sure if they're even going to have a June deadline. 30th, the governor may push that back because the auditors aren't able to audit. They're not able to be on site, so.
What was the recommended fund balance for senior services to carry? We've, we've had a recommended amount at one time.
Isn't it board policy, it's, it's, you have a board policy that says how much fund balance you're supposed to have. And I don't know that number off the top of my head.
So what we're not sure is, is?
If it's a quarter on the millage?
Possibly.
So that you could sustain at least three months?
Right. That's what I was.
That's what I thought process is.
Kind of in the back of my mind. But my concern is that once before, this crept up and we ended up with, with way too much money in senior services, we corrected. Some say we overcorrected, and I don't want to see that happen again. I would like to see us ask for the right amount. So, um, if we could put this off until April, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have a problem doing that. But, um, but I'm, I'm prepared to support it tonight also. So, um, I just want to see us ask for the right amount and not get that fund balance built back up again.
Okay, so this is for the two-year, you know, things. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion fails five to two.
Okay, just for permission, the deadline is 4:00 PM, April 21st.
Okay, so it is April. Commissioner Rittenbach.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the senior set, uh, senior citizen services millage as presented, resolution number 2020, to be assigned.
Support.
Okay, and this will be a roll call vote, which probably should have been the last one, but.
Are you ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Rittenbach?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushden?
No.
Commissioner Sudas Little?
Yes.
Commissioner Westle?
Yes.
Commissioner Ansorgy?
Yes.
Chairman Bonnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
So the motion passes six to one. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so then, that would bring us to Drain Commission's recommended approval of as-needed contract. Commissioner Long.
I would move that we waive board policy on bids and approve the as-needed consulting and engineering services agreement for the general drain consulting between. Wow. I think we quite wrote that quite right, did we? With the agreement for the drain consulting between the County of Lelandau for Lelandau County Drain Commissioner and GEI Consultants for Michigan PC as presented. And funds to come from 801.030. So I think there's one too many in there, but I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those, all those opposed?
Aye.
The motion passes six to one. Thank you. So then that would be, the next one would be the request to approve the application and county match for the DNR recreational passport grant. Commissioner Long.
Thought maybe Mr. Westle wanted to make the motion, so I hesitated. I would move to approve the Parks Commission to pursue a 2020 recreation passport grant, the RPP, as outlined in scenario F of the project opinion of probable cost in the amount of $150,000. And that the board approve a $50,000 local match entirely from the general fund balance from prior year 2019 equal to the Parks budget not spent.
Support.
Commissioner Ritten.
Did we get a definition of what MIPP, whatever?
Recreational passport grant. Is that what that's supposed to be? RPG.
I think we asked to have it spelled out, and I just wasn't sure what that was. The MIPP, whatever.
I don't really know what it is.
Yeah, it's on.
I do have that. Yes.
Oh, RPG.
So RPG. I will get the correct letters in there. I don't care.
It's RPP, but there's a Michigan.
Well, recreational passport.
Yep, and I believe it, you have the MIPP.
College program.
Okay, it's on here, but it's very, very tiny print.
On the map? On the map?
It's on this line.
Can I just put in whatever it says on the form?
Sure.
Okay. That'd be great.
Commissioner Rushton.
I need a clarification on this 50,000 local match. This motion states that this will come entirely from the general fund. However, I thought that the Parks and Rec set aside $10,000 this year towards the match. They did not? It was my understanding that out of the 2020 budget that they set aside, no?
That, we had this discussion last week. My understanding was, I'm sorry.
Commissioner, answer.
We had this discussion last week, and they did not put it in this year's budget.
Okay.
However, if they choose to underspend the money-
Commissioner, did you want to say something again?
I just wanted to remind, so at the Parks and Recs committee meeting between 2018, 2019, they have underspent in hopes to go for this budget. In 2020, they have kept their budget the same. They didn't ask for anything more or less, that I believe. So in trying to save for that, they have underspent over the last two years. This grant funds that they're coming to you for is for 2021. So you can make those adjustments if needed, but to get them to apply for the grant you wanted to match.
Thank you for that clarification.
Any other questions?
I, last week, raised my concerns in regards to the aggregate stone that was being placed on the, the walking path. It was explained that this was a grant that requires an ADA path. But my level of concern going forward is to do these, this path or these paths that they presented to us last week, the cost of that is over $90,000. And I raise the concern going forward if we are going to put aggregate stone on those additional pathways in that particular park. And the cost of paving those paths in the same manner, I, in my opinion, do not think that that dollar amount should be spent on our parks for that reason.
Commissioner, answer.
We did have a discussion about whether the, there was underlayment included, and Steve was going to check on that, and maybe he can answer that question, yes or no.
There is underlayment. I, I gave him a bad question, Rush. She's typically asked for it. I have a copy.
You know, it does show fabric underneath there.
Was that included with the price?
Yes.
Okay.
Any, any other questions or statements? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion passes six to one. Commissioner Lotner.
I've moved that the County Board of Commissioners not allow any non-governmental items to be placed on the government's center campus.
Second.
Commissioner Rattenbach.
I won't be able to support this motion. Last meeting, we had, and have now recently accepted as a part of our consent agenda, to take the recommendation from legal counsel that all requests asking to place non-government items on county property will be considered on a case-by-case basis. So we're going against what we just voted to accept by considering another motion that sets a policy that we just had decided earlier that we, on advice of legal counsel, weren't going to do, and that we were going to take everything on a case-by-case basis. So I won't be supporting.
Commissioner Rushton.
The purpose of this recommendation is because we have an existing landscape plan here on the campus. And in review of that landscape plan, there was an in-depth look at the grounds here. And in considering the underlying infrastructure, among other things, we proposed closing the campus to any additional placement and to look to our parks for that purpose. So I will support closing this campus for any additional plantings going forward. In the event that we have a bush or a tree or something that dies, I would be willing to open up the county campus to consider a donation for replacing existing plantings on this campus.
That wasn't, my understanding was is that the case-by-case is for Park and Rec. If, and this campus would be closed. So that's the way I read this motion, is that we're closing this campus to memorials and other things. And with the case-by-case, when things come forward, are where they're going to go in the Park and Rec. It would go to Park and Rec first. They would make a decision, and then it would come to the, before anything gets placed in any park, it would come to this board. Commissioner Rattenbach.
If the chair.
Yes. Commissioner Wessel.
I, I will not support this motion because I, I think typically and generally, we do want to restrict the additions to our grounds. This was a real exception, and it was an opportunity to celebrate one of the most important events in our nation's history. We could have been a partner for that. And I really am disappointed that we didn't, to grab a hold of that and say, yes, we want to celebrate a very important event. We want it on our main campus. We want it in the center of the county. And I just think we made a big mistake. And I don't support a general policy that won't allow us to make some individual decisions as we move forward.
Commissioner Sudas Little, did you have your hand up?
I did. I was trying to silence the phone. My husband was going to grab that. Sorry. I am not going to support it because, number one, I couldn't say it better than P C R would have. It is not my understanding that what the process would be to go to Parks and Rec, but I thought it was all requests. At that time, we were talking about eliminating campus, non-campus in that particular procedure that would be approved. Or I probably wouldn't have approved it. I did support it, but I don't support that we don't look at, you know, the campus, and basically, if something died, this policy would prevent it. We'd have to go back and undo what we already did. That makes no sense to me. I think Commissioner Wessel has very adequately expressed what I would have expressed, and that is, I think we have an opportunity here that's one we lost, and it's most unfortunate. And I, too, am very disappointed. But I won't support it because I don't think we want to put in place an absolute policy that then dictates what we do for the rest of time.
May I clarify just a little? And it's your choice, but I just want to clarify the word policies being used. After last week's meeting with some concerns, I double-checked our legal counsel, which you approved. My memo was a procedure. And he stands by saying they don't want a policy. If you approve this, this is a motion by the board. It's not board policy. Board policies are manual policies. This is simply a motion that you are saying this. In the future, a board can change this motion, make a different motion. So the word policy is used, I just want to know there's a ton of difference from that. You approved a procedure, and now you are discussing the potential of a motion on this campus that unless you truly want to make it a policy, but this is not a policy, this was not part of our common policy manual.
I mean, actually, have we, have we made that procedure here? Or did it, when we passed it, wasn't that just last week?
Yeah.
Yeah. So it really-
It was part of the consent agenda tonight, and we approved it, yeah.
Oh, good. Commissioner Lotner.
Well, as we stated last week, we have lots of room in our parks for additional shrubbery, additional trees, additional plaques. Because with these donations, always come a plaque. And that was my concern, is that we do not want to begin to, to overburden this campus with those sort of donations. And if we open the door to one, we're going to open the door to many. We can still be a partner in this great event in one of our parks. And we have three to choose from. There's absolutely no reason it can't be done. And I wholeheartedly support it. I think it's a great idea. I know there's lots of room, as I said, in our parks for these sort of things. And that, that is where it belongs, rather than, rather than on this campus, considering, considering everything this campus encompasses.
Commissioner Rushton.
I would just like to point out, as Commissioner Wessel was not here last week, I would like to point out that when this decision was made, it was not based on an emotional decision. We all agreed that the purpose of the request was honorable. It didn't matter to us at the time who made the request. We did not want to view this project from an emotional standpoint. We viewed this project strictly from the information that we received in regards to the layout of this campus, the pros and the cons of adding additional vegetation, obstacles for future growth, and so on and so forth. I also expressed that I personally thought that it would allow the opportunity for more of our citizens and our visitors to be able to view the plaque, the monument, to give accolades or for the organization that is supporting the tree planting to have family picnics in honor of the, the hard work that was done to pass the, I believe it was the 19th amendment. So just to be clear, this is not about the organization that donated, and this decision was not made on an emotional, as an emotional decision. This is a practical decision that was made.
Commissioner Rattenbach.
If the chair.
Just, Commissioner Rattenbach had her hand up first.
I just want to go back to procedure. And last week, as I said before, and we reiterated again tonight, the way this reads is that all requests asking to place non-government items on county property, including parks, will be considered on a case-by-case basis. And at last week's meeting, after we approved this motion, we didn't consider the two cases that were put before us as were on the agenda. And then this other motion comes out of, you know, the blue, so to speak, and, and is directed specifically towards this campus, separating it from the parks. It doesn't say anything about this campus, or, I mean, it does say including the parks. So, I mean, this campus is included in the case-by-case basis. And I just don't understand, when you approve something like that, and it's the recommendation that we not have a policy from our legal counsel, why you would then go and make a policy.
Commissioner Wessel.
That, that was the point I was going to make. I did, I did view the video of last week's meeting. I was confused by how we ended up where we were after looking at the legal opinion. And then I also do believe that some of the comments were very emotional last week.
Commissioner, answer.
I would just like to make one clarification. This motion just says that we do not allow any non-governmental items. If we have a tree that dies in the future, and somebody wants to pay for the tree, we could accept that donation to plant the tree. It just doesn't have a plaque on it. So I must want to make that clarification, that, you know, we have the opportunity to replace dead trees and stuff, and people can support that. We're just not going to have plaques or benches, all that kind of stuff spread around here. So I just wanted to make that clarification.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four to three. Okay, so then that would then bring us to administration, labor negotiation.
Yeah, as allowed by the Open Meetings Act, I am recommending we go into closed session to discuss labor negotiations because of the fact we have two people in PoliCom. We normally go into the room. However, this time, I am asking that we continue having here and ask our guests to leave until we are done with the closed session.
I would make the motion to go into closed session.
Second.
All right. It's be a roll call.
Commissioner Anne Sorgi?
Yes.
Chairman Bannick?
Yes.
Commissioner Lotner?
Yes.
Commissioner Rattenbach?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushton?
Yes.
Commissioner Sudas Little?
I don't know. Yes.
Commissioner Wessel?
Yes.
Seven, zero.
We will come back. Okay, all right. Because I need some, the closed session is closed.
Is that short enough for you? Okay, even by your side here? Okay. All right, where's girlfriend? Not really. No. Of course not. We know it was a joke.
All right, can we have a motion, please?
They're scared of us.
Yeah.
Yeah, go back into open session. Please.
I'll make a motion that we return to open session at this time.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven, zero. So we are now back in session. So could we have Commissioner Lotner?
I would move, I would move that we decline the proposal of labor negotiations. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All, all those opposed? Motion passes seven, zero. Thank you very much. So then that would bring, would you, financials?
I have none.
All right, any other reports by staff? Anyone else? No?
I have one.
Yes.
I think that you'll want to watch. There may be some more information coming out tomorrow from the governor. I was on a late conference call today about the May election because we're scheduled to have one in Lelandau County. And it's possible, strong possibility, that it will be a mail, voting by mail as opposed to in-person. And the Bureau of Elections will be helping facilitate that. So you should watch for some news clips on that tomorrow.
Interesting. Anything else? Okay, so then that bring us to public comment. Any public comment? Yes.
There was a request that was mailed to all of us from Jan Frazi that she would like to have placed into the record as public comment. Trying to find that. Trying to find that, find that letter.
I believe it was last Thursday.
It was, it was dated Friday, March 13th at 10:16 a.m. It went to all of us, and she's asked that that be put into the public record.
Okay.
Public comment.
Who's it from?
Jan Frazi.
Frazi, yeah. All right, so any commissioners' comments? If you wanted to do public comment, come forward.
Public comment, yes.
Yeah, please come forward up here. I didn't see your name. Please state your name and where you're from, please.
Okay. My name is Mel Black. I recently moved up here last fall. Current address, 13846 South Cedar Run Road, which I don't know how it ever got to be Cedar Run Road, but regardless. I'm currently going to be running for County Road Commission. I'm a little bit taken back, I've gone to a few of the road commission meetings. I'm, have mixed emotions as to my feelings as to the current road commission with some of the things that I've observed since I've been here. But I'm going to run, unfortunately having to run against a good man, Mr. Pope, but I'm still going to do so. And tonight, when the lady was sitting here with solid waste, I stepped out and talked to her briefly. I don't know what this board could ever do, but I'm, I was, I've been very shocked at the, and I've done some looking into it as to the cost of using the public landfill here. I just, I'm appalled. I got it a house, worked on it some, but the landfill hit me at over $800 for four loads. This is the most expensive landfill. I've done some of these calling around. It's one of the most expensive in the state of Michigan. I realize there were some covenants, I understand, on the property that has caused this to happen, but I would highly encourage this board to examine if there's, be very careful of this one, this recycling. I'm all for recycling. I love what they've done in Cedar and Soul Intonation Ship, and I've heard you've done very well over there with your recycling. I think that's commendable and good, and I think you've done a great job, but I just wanted to introduce myself and express a few comments, but I like what I see.
Excuse me. Mr. Chairman, would you have Speaker repeat his name for us again?
Mel Black.
Mel Black. The color's black.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? Seeing none, now we'll go to commissioner comments. Commissioner Anzour.
At this point in time, I'd like to make my fellow commissioners and the public aware that I will not be running for reelection after my term expires. So if there's anybody out there that is interested in District One, I am very willing to talk to anybody that might be wanting to consider being a commissioner. So anybody in District One, give me a call. I'll be glad to talk to you.
Did you scare you off?
I got sweet talk. You know how well I do that.
Thanks for sharing.
Yeah. Commissioner Russell.
I had a, I wanted to thank the three commissioners and Michelle and Chet for their heavy load on negotiations. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Well, it's not through you.
I was just going to say, it's not over with yet.
We'll keep up the work.
Any other commissioner comments? Yes.
Maybe one, just, just a question. I, I had more questions about this document.
Yeah, that's.
Well, I would like to see about getting a potential legal opinion on it. I'd like to request a legal opinion.
I think what you're saying, and other commissioners asked, is whether we have any legal authority to get involved in the situation, correct?
Yes.
If you wish to, I can get a legal opinion of that.
Do I just have to request? I mean.
Well, normally, if any commissioner asks me for legal opinion, I probably.
Okay. In full reports? All reports?
I'll, I'll.
Commissioner Ruston, did you have a comment?
I was just reading over the letter that was requested to go in public comment, and I was trying to discern if they were criticizing Chairman Bonak to, for repeating what was said to him.
I didn't read it that way. I, at least I didn't. It was, she said that the facts were, I'm sorry.
The statement is false and should have never been stated publicly without first checking the truthfulness of such an absurd accusation, so.
Well, I didn't, it was in a letter form, so.
Okay.
It goes back to an enterprise.
Right.
I, I just wanted to clarify that it wasn't your opinion, it was a repeat of somebody else's opinion.
Oh, no, it's a direct quote from the enterprise.
From the letter, you know, that was written to him.
Okay.
But there also was a.
She didn't check the facts, is what it came out.
Well, that was my point, that.
All right, any other commissioner comment? All right, so then we have approval, we have some, a couple of amendments and transfers. Commissioner Laugner?
I would move to, I would move that we approve amendment number 20-001.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes seven, zero.
I'd move to approve fund transfer number 20-002.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six, or seven, zero.
Move to approve claims and accounts $420,906.51.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes seven, zero.
I would move to approve post audit $1,656,433.40.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes seven, zero. So I would say then we are adjourned. Thank you very much.